All right, we're going to open the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, July 6, 2020. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have anybody on the Zoom link?
We do not.
We do not, okay. So Bill, do you want to read the warrants?
Absolutely. Motion to approve payroll warrant 20-53 in the amount of $155,287.64.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to pass bill warrant 20-53 in the amount of $113,675.19, which breaks down as follows: Town $60,655.87, water and sewer $1,858.23, payroll withholding $33,382.16, light bills $1,668.75, and grants revolving $19,110.18.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve payroll warrant 21-01 in the amount of $31,172.99.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve bill warrant 21-01 in the amount of $154,666.92, which breaks down as follows: Town $9,041.1, water and sewer $29,637.93, payroll withholding $1,193.65, light bills $114,233.96, and grants revolving $560.37.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. We have the minutes from June 11, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table those. We just received them tonight so that we can read them over and make sure that they're in order, all three, minutes of June 11, 22, and executive session on the 24.
Mr. Chairman, they were in your last packet as correspondence.
I thought the two of them were, I thought the executive session and...
They were all in your last packet.
Oh, they were, okay, because I definitely read two of them, and I just read this one now.
Did those get passed over?
They weren't on correspondence.
You didn't see those in the last correspondence, the last...
They were in there.
Is there anything in there that is dire that we...
No, you can table them, but they were all provided to us correspondence. That's why I didn't send them out early, because you had them all from last meeting.
All right, let's table those till the following meeting.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Did anybody get a chance to read those? I skimmed through them.
I read this one quickly now, and I had read this one before.
Which ones is this one in?
So this one, the executive session for Monday 22, June 22, I have already reviewed.
All right, let's take the minutes from June 11, 2020.
Okay.
Does someone want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion for favorable action. We've reviewed them.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? All those abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay. Minutes from June 22, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the executive session minutes.
This just says minutes from June 20, 20, June 22, 20.
Yes, that was...
Then there's executive session minutes.
Right.
That was the executive before the town meeting.
Well, we had executive, yeah. We ran open, we went into executive, and then we came back into open, so they're titled executive.
Okay, then executive.
Yes, combo.
Get a motion.
I'll make a motion favorable.
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Favorable.
Is there a second?
On the, yeah, June 22?
Yes.
The one page.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah.
All right. And then executive session minutes from June 24, 2020.
Yes, I did review these, I'm favorable. These were where I sent my notes into Denise, and I remember.
All right, so we got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Abstain.
All right, next up, we have discussion and possible vote. Before we get to that, I wanted to comment about the meeting procedures, and the last several meetings has been a lot of over-talking and interrupting of people, so we're going to tighten that up and make sure that everyone gets a chance to talk, but we're also going to make sure that they're not interrupted when they're talking and making their points. So we're going to tighten up the over-talking and interruption and make sure everyone has their turn in just, but the over-talking and interruptions is going to stop. So town manager discussion. Joe, welcome.
Well, thank you. I presented to you last week in public's comment, concept about exploring as a town the advantages to the town and the people for reformulating our government a little bit further beyond the five-member board, and that is to consider the possibility of a town manager or a town administrator. As I had mentioned last week, there is quite a bit of precedent about this. Out of the 300, and by the way, hopefully you've all had an opportunity to go through the packet that I left you last week, and I have this material, which will be projected, being projected right now by Denise, thank you. There's 351 municipalities in Massachusetts, 292 of them have a town meeting form of government like we do, and approximately 50% have three-member boards of selectmen and 50% roughly have five-member boards. What's astonishing even to me, when I did the research, as this sheet here will show, is that there's 173 of those municipalities that have a town administrator. 76 have town managers, six have town coordinators, and four have executive secretaries. So we really are in the extreme minority. It almost doesn't matter whether you have a three- or a five-member board. We have a five-member board, which is slightly in the majority in terms of counting how many boards out there that are in five, but what puts us in the minority is we are absent a town administrator and a town manager of some form, and there's even hybrid forms. So tonight, I'm going to briefly talk to you about the rationale for transforming our government into its last, I believe, truly historic and evolutionarily inevitable step, the reasons for it. I will talk to you a little bit about giving a special charge to a group of citizens, and we can call it the Town Government Study Committee. I'll also talk quite extensively about how to enable voters to participate, and I do believe that this is the people's decision, and I have several steps to suggest to you how that can be done very comprehensively from start to finish. I'll also talk to you a little bit briefly about a completely alternative method called the charter commission method. I'll describe very briefly what that is, give you plenty of examples of local cities and towns that have implemented that. I do believe that generally speaking, if there was going to be a special charge to a committee of citizens, that that charge is not included as to whether or not we should have a town administrator, but just how to do it, one, possibly two pathways. And then with the steps that I'll recommend to get the voters completely involved in deciding to go further with it and ultimately implement that will be their decision. So Denise, if you could help me with the next slide, and that is the rationale for transforming our government, that's the evolution, the next first page, when you get a moment. So some of the rationale is, there is some employee turnover, and as we know, for any city and town, it can be expensive. Sometimes, and I've sat where you all are, and I felt this, sometimes the board of selectmen and the chairs may not be fully equipped or should not be involved in intervening in day-to-day operations, and that's always been a bit of a, historically, some of the things that, you know, could be problematic. I do believe that 100 years ago, the town form of government is valid, and I believe today it still is, but I do believe that five-member boards should engage more in governance, less administration, and really offload that administration through governance to an administrator. Another precedent that we have for that is very easy to see, it's our school system. The school system is managed directly by principals who are legally responsible for their own buildings, and then, of course, we have a superintendent, and then we have a school committee that engages in governance. Now, if we don't like the way our school system runs, we, the voters, can interface with the school committee and/or also vote people in and vote people out. So we do have some reach, some say, but ultimately, the whole thing is delegated to a profession. I'm a financial advisor, and I was in a very competitive situation a few years ago, and a very wealthy individual had been managing his own funds for years, including a trust fund of his family, interviewed, I don't know how many, financial advisors, and me and my partner were chosen. I remember asking him, "Why, with your ability, would you hire a financial advisor?" He says, "I just need someone to blame if something goes wrong." So there is a power to delegate the administration of our town, and you wonderful volunteers that commit a lot of your time and the sacrifices for serving, you don't ever get caught up into a situation where you inadvertently are administering or handling a personnel issue and all kinds of pitfalls. So the board of selectmen are limited to posted meetings for decision-making and are at risk of running afoul of some open meeting laws, that's another pitfall, especially, and again, I've been in your shoes, when there's an urgent matter or an emergency, it gets really, really difficult. And we've been very blessed, truly blessed, with Denise's service to our town. We've had a very strong finance director, combination personnel director, so thank you, Denise, for your service. But by law, the finance director authority is somewhat limited, and we always have to be cautious that we don't push that person in that position a little bit beyond the scope of what legally they're supposed to do or not do. Converting the finance director's position is just that, it is a conversion. I'm not suggesting that we should have both a finance director plus a town manager. It's a very convenient way to convert that position, and it's cost-effective, and I think it will support efficiencies. Town employees will have one authority to report to and be guided in personnel matters, and ultimately understand that the town manager or town administrator is a chief financial officer, chief procurement officer, compliance officer, and personnel officer. Next slide, please, thank you. So how do we present this to the town and in what manner? Well, I think having a committee of, actually, nobody on the board should be on this committee, no offense. I think it should be strictly a special charge of a committee composed of volunteer citizens that are willing to do a study, and a study to explore what other towns are doing, a study that explore different pathways on how we can implement a town administrator. And again, I believe, I feel very strongly, that that charge should not also include, by the way, decide whether you think, or you should tell the board whether you think it's a good idea or a bad idea. Let's just go past that point and just charge that committee with how to do it, not whether or not we should do it. The whether or not we should do it, at the beginning, is your choice, just to put it on town meeting floor and on a ballot, but ultimately, it's the people's decision. So you form an ADAR committee known as the Town Government Study Committee, which I have here on the slide, with a special charge, as I explained, but then there are basically seven things that we should do, and we should do really, really well. First of all, we form the study group under your charge, under your direction. That group will produce a proposal at some point to you, the board of selectmen. It could include either one pathway or maybe more than one pathway on how to implement a town manager. Along the way, there should be perhaps some online surveys. We should engage people immediately, especially after the proposal has been made to you, for people to engage in input about the town, about the proposal. We did that very, we do that often with the school system, on major issues, on the selection of the superintendent, there are public surveys, there are online surveys. I also would suggest that we have informational meetings. No voting at those meetings. We just present the proposal as I presented, as if I'm on that committee, our committee would present it to you. You can send it back to our committee for modification or further study, and then ultimately, if you accept it, then you engage the public in two things, surveys and informational meetings. Then ultimately, you put it on the town floor at annual meeting, a week later, it's on the ballot, and that's how you get people involved. So it's not the committee that has the special charge to decide yes or no we should do it, we're past that point, this is how to do it, that's our job. You look at the proposal, you reject it, you accept it, or send it back for modification and refinement, so that you can have your input as well. Obviously, your input is valuable, and then ultimately, get people involved, informational meetings, survey, raise your hand if you support it or not at town meeting, and then a week later, behind the curtain, behind closed doors, people make a decision the American way, they vote for it. Should that happen, we do have to engage in, by the way, this is controlled by Chapter 41, Section 23A. Correct me if I'm wrong, Denise, I believe we would have to engage in the home rule petition and have legislation passed, like we did with the five-member board?
But I just, I do want to caution, I know you're recommending a ballot, and that's fine, it would be a non-binding ballot question, because the special legislation does not use a ballot question.
Thank you for reminding me. We could actually do it without putting it on the ballot, but I believe that we should, even if it's non-binding, thank you for that. So the processing, next, right there is fine, process for enabling voters, as you see, report the findings, develop the report, it does, the committee that you give a special charge to does not vote for or against the measure. Of course, there'll be advocates for the position, and it removes the potential for a very limited number of voters to decide with the process that I'm suggesting. Next slide, please, survey by voters online, next slide, please, informational meetings, duly posted open meetings, presentation of facts, no voting. And then ultimately, if we were to engage in this process soon, then we could be looking at potentially placing this on the town meeting floor in 2021 or 2022, and then a ballot question, and then House legislation would have to be produced, just like we did last time, we would find a, like we did with the five-member board, we would ask a legislator to sponsor a bill, and then that bill is going to be in committee for a bit, and then those of us from the town that wish to go to the public hearing can do and even, you know, provide comments for or against, and then at some point, if the general court decides that it's in the best interest of our town, to make that change, they will, and then it ultimately is a bill that needs to be signed by the governor, just similar to what we did with the five-member board. The next thing that I want to share with you is the alternate method.
You're not going to do the rest of these slides?
No, the rest of the slide, I'm sorry, just...
It's okay.
The rest of the slide, yes, publicly, yes, let's take a look at that publicly available data and information, certainly along the process. One of the things that I am going to do is make a recommendation, when you are forming that charge, we really want to do something that I think will be very helpful. There's a lot of people in this area that know how to do this and have done it and experienced it, so it would be really a good idea to interview town managers and administrators in the area and pull all that information out, especially for the public during the informational sessions, and certainly bring some of that information into the report as well. Again, I think that once the committee produces a report, it's in draft form, it comes to you, and then you reject it, accept it, or what I really think should happen is, you put your input in there as well, you make recommendations as well, and then ultimately, between the committee and the board of selectmen, the charge is fulfilled, and that is, we present something to the public. And reviewing of the best practices of Massachusetts Municipal Management Association, I looked at some of these resources recently, there's been quite a few town manager formulations in the North Shore since 2000, so we have a lot of good data out there. We're not going into something that's never been done before, we're going into something that, we're one of the few people that haven't done it, or towns. And so these are sources that I think would be beneficial, especially during the informational meetings. The next slides will show you some of the folks that, in fact, I did speak to in the past, and I was looking at this a few years ago, tapping the knowledge of others. Go ahead, Denise.
So if I may, none of these individuals work in those locations any longer?
Okay, well, then I need to upgrade that.
So the three town managers you've listed are all, have all moved on.
Good. I spoke with Andrew, there was, I spoke with a couple of those, this is about four years ago, about four, five years ago, so, this has to be updated, yes, of course. Any questions so far?
Yeah, I have one question about your Town Government Study Committee, and you referenced survey a couple of times, is that, is that the same thing that we did for the survey a couple of years ago about possibly moving to town manager? Is that what you mean?
Yeah. You mean if we did it with the public?
Didn't we do that? Did we have...
General public?
You did a town-wide survey on a bunch of different topics, that was one of them, yes.
Right, and that came back favorable?
It was favorable, yes.
By a lot.
I would say, I think it was two-thirds favorable, I don't remember the exact numbers off the top of my head.
Right, and that was, what, two years ago, roughly?
It would have been the January tax bill, I believe, so January...
18.
20, no, 2019 or 2020, it was only, it was in the last two years, I'd say.
Yeah, so...
Were you on the board when we did it?
No.
No.
No, you had the results.
I wasn't on the board.
Okay.
Right. So I think that that information is still...
Relevant.
Yeah, it's still relevant and valid.
Sure.
And if anything else, it's gotten more complicated and more convoluted with the five-member board, and more people moving to town, and more issues with town and town government, so it's only exasperated that more, that we should move to town manager. Did you have any questions, Bill?
Just the one quick one about your slide with the, slide with the ballot question, I guess, from what Denise is saying, it'd be non-binding at the ballot?
Correct, the special legislation does not require a binding ballot question, so in order to file the special legislation, there's no ballot question needed, so it would be non-binding, because the law does not allow a binding special legislation question.
And as far as your committee, I think it's a good idea. How long do you anticipate that committee's work?
I mean realistically, it's probably a 90-day project.
90 days?
90 days, yeah, maybe we have a meeting every two weeks, and we have, I'm going to guess, four or five people, and we all do our homework, and we convene every two weeks and put our homework together and start building a draft document, that we'll go into a little bit more detail.
So what your suggestion is, suggesting is, that if we were to form a committee and give you a charge, you could report back to this board within 90 days with your recommendations or a...
Yeah, let me clarify that, 90 days also captures the informational sessions and the surveys, if you choose to do that. So we probably want to produce a report within 30 days, maybe 60 days, and then, you know, have informational sessions for the public and also an online survey, if you choose to do that. One homework assignment that I would assign, or would suggest, would be a salary survey. You know, what is this going to cost us, really? How much, what is the going rate for a town manager and a town administrator? You know, how do we fit that into our budget, can we? So there's the different tracks of things that need to be done, and it's a little bit of work that needs to be done, but 90 days, roughly 30 to 60 days to come up with a draft and finalize the draft, and then another month or so, you can extend it, another two months if you'd like, to get people involved with the survey and also the informational meetings, that'll put you into, you know, certainly well within striking distance of possibly placing it on the ballot, I'm sorry, on town meeting next year.
So you feel pretty confident if...
I'm sorry?
You feel pretty confident, then, that by the end of this year, your committee could have pretty tight...
I think if we have some people like yourselves, very devoted to the town and want to do some meaningful work and roll up their sleeves and do the work, I think 90 days is a reasonable opportunity. There's no rush by any stretch, even in my slide, I did, I think 100 years from now, it's inevitable, 100 years ago where we were, we're going to bring one piece of that, and that is a town meeting form of government, I'll go to the grave believing that that must always be. I do see the advantages and the efficiencies of the five-member board, but I, even when I was advocating for a five-member board, and some of us on that committee were advocating that the natural extension and conclusion to the reformulation of our government with a five-member board was to have a town administrator. And I'm pleased to hear that, conceptually, some people understand that and tend to support it, but again, in the interest of fairness, do it again, my opinion, strictly, don't bring up that survey and use just that, resurvey people if you choose that that is a viable method. I think it, I just feel very strongly that it really has to be the people's decision. You know, on a good day, we might have, on a good day, we might have 1,200, 1,400 voters come out in a town of 7,000, and even that worries me, because it's still not the people's decision.
Right, and that gets to my last question, do you feel you have enough energy to form this committee, you have enough energy in the masses to form a committee of, I'd say, at least five people, right?
Yeah.
You get a kind of cross...
I didn't, I didn't, I would like to serve on that committee, I didn't consider that I would recruit to it. I would feel that the board should recruit to it and build the necessary talent pool or look into the talent pool. I mean, supposedly, I could promote with you and say, hey, who would like to join me in this endeavor, but this is not my gig, I'm offering my service.
And I didn't mean to put you...
No, no, that's okay.
Throw you in the ring there.
No worries.
I just, you know, I know your passion about it, but I'm just wondering if there's, if there's still energy and passion out there. I know that the conversation kind of got derailed with this COVID.
Yeah.
We were moving forward, but now, you know, just want to make sure there's enough interest, that a committee can be formed.
Well, you know...
Something I'll mention later on, I mean, we had less than 800 people vote in the last election, and as to your point, we've got almost 7,000 people in the town, not all of them can vote, mind you, but it sure is, that doesn't speak well of our involvement.
Well, listen, I have unlimited energy, so don't worry about me. I didn't plan on recruiting, I can help if you want.
Yes, that was my last question.
I think, I think in this process, I would suggest that the board of selectmen also are involved in recruiting, that's just a gut feeling.
Yeah, I think we all have ideas of who should be on that type of a committee, so... Kathleen?
Yes, my concern is that we need clarification on the combination of a town meeting vote and a ballot vote. I like the idea of taking it to both, but I don't want to say to the ballot vote people that their vote doesn't count, and I didn't have, I didn't research how we created the financial director position, I'm not sure if we went to the ballot on that, let me just...
I'll just, yeah.
I know that when we changed the highway superintendent from elected to appointed... I know that when we changed the highway superintendent from elected to appointed, I think we had to go to the ballot. So we went to town meeting and the ballot on that. When we expanded this board, we went to the town meeting and the ballot. And then at one point, when we changed the planning board from elected to appointed, just town meeting did that, and then just town meeting reversed that. So I feel like I'm a little confused about how, why, you know, this couldn't be ballot and town meeting, that the ballot would ratify the town meeting vote. Yes.
Denise?
So we did not go to the ballot for the highway superintendent. It was special legislation only. Town council has provided documentation to this board that you cannot have a binding ballot question on special legislation. It is not allowed under the legislation. When it is a non-special legislation aspect, i.e., elected to appointed, that's not special legislation. That is changing a type of position. Then you go to the ballot. But you cannot have a binding ballot question if you're doing special legislation.
Did we go to the ballot for the five-member board?
I don't know. That was...
Yes, we did.
I think, I think you did. I think it was one year, and then the following year, the board changed with the...
But we did a non-binding vote for the marijuana question a couple of years back as well.
Yes.
Non-binding. So it didn't matter what the vote was. It's more of a survey to see what people had thought, to get their input. So whether it's binding or not binding, it's more of a survey to get the overall thought of what the town thinks.
Right.
As part of that process, not just saying that we're going to do it this way. Go ahead.
So when we expanded this board, we went to the annual town meeting and then a week later to the ballot. That's how we did it. And then they did the...
Right, but that wasn't a special legislative act.
Okay.
So town council has reviewed this. We've been discussing this since I've been here. So town council has provided advice that you cannot have a binding ballot question to go with special legislation. Special legislation is the legislative body of the town passing the act, which is town meeting. They are the special legislative body of the town of Groveland. So if you're putting through it forward a special legislative act, it's town meeting and the state legislation. You could do a non-binding question to supplement that.
Have we asked town council if we could make the town meeting vote contingent? If town meeting votes a contingency, would that be legal?
I don't know if it's a special legislative act. I don't know if it could be contingent.
Okay, well, that would be something I'd like to know at some point. That's it.
Could I take your question again?
If town meeting were to vote a change to the administrative government, contingent on approval as well at the ballot, we get a contingent motion at town meeting. So it is contingent on the ballot passing?
No, I don't think you can do that, because then you're still relying on the ballot question. The ballot question is irrelevant. It's more of a survey than anything else. Whether it's for or against, it's irrelevant with the outcome, based on that information.
I would just like to know from the council, because we do vote things contingent on ballot questions. We've done it in the past. So I would just like to know that.
May I make a suggestion? Let's, if we're all big fans of the town meeting form of government, and we really believe that, let's not forget that the most, in my opinion, and this is an editorial, the most powerful authority in this town exists for one evening only typically, one night a year called town meeting. If the decision is made there, that's a pretty good decision, for or against.
Correct. Ed, did you have any questions?
Yes. On your, your process for enabling voters to participate, I think that's the third slide?
Yeah.
Does not vote for or against the measure, but then your next line advocates for the position. So basically, they're not voting, but they're, all of them are in favor of, would be in favor of the process.
Yeah, I think that's technically correct, because the charge is to how to do it. And so naturally, how to do it, you're going to be predisposed to wanting to do it, not whether or not you should do it. See, one of the things that I noticed about the five-member board committee is that we went through many months arguing as to whether or not we should do it or not. And that became very political, and who was on that board made a difference. I want to not experience that again, in my opinion. If I were to be on this committee and that committee had a special charge that also included whether or not you should do it, I'm not signing up for it. I would only do it because you are charging us to how to do it, and the decision is not yours. Ultimately, it's the people's.
Right, and I would say that if we do form that type of committee, then the assumption is that that charge is that we want to do this. And you should move forward with why we should do it, not debating whether or not we should do it. That goes down to town meeting and to the vote, whether or not it happens, correct?
Absolutely. Selectmen Watson's concern is perfectly valid, but I believe that what I'm suggesting, if we, if the charges delivered the way I'm suggesting to you, we won't get into the politics of it.
Right.
Let us have those arguments at town meeting.
Anything else? Yep?
No, you listed, tapping the knowledge of others, you listed four different individuals here. And you listed one, two of them actually, with a population of 29,700, Stonem 22,000. And wouldn't it make sense to use municipalities that are close to the size of the town of Groveland to get a, to get a better, obviously, the population of 29,700, because they're different than the town of Groveland. What I did, Joe, was I took Groveland, which is 222nd in population in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I took the 10 towns that were, had a larger population and 10 towns that had less of a population. And oddly enough, what you had mentioned before, of those 20, not including Groveland, 10 of them had a three-member board of selectmen and 10 of them had a five-member board.
Fifty-five.
But 16 of them had a town administrator, three of them had a town manager, and one had an executive, like an executive secretary. And that is the town of Merrimack, which has, according to these stats, 50 more people than the town of Groveland. But all of them, what concerns me about it, it's probably a good idea to look at it, but what concerns me is the support staff. And of those 20, I'll just give you some examples. If you, if you take a look at the budgets for these towns, and I'm not going to go over the, because I didn't do, I didn't finish with all 20 of them. If you look at the budget for, you've got one particular town which, the town of Rowley, which is, Groveland is 222nd in population, Rowley 228. So Rowley is less than us. They have a town administrator. They have two assistant town administrators. They have an administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen, and they have a treasurer, collector. Those cost money. And, but every one of them has, except Groveland and one, Southampton, have an administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen. So there's obviously, if you go with a town manager or a town administrator, there's additional employees, which is going to cost more. Do you, would part of the charge, do you think, would be for the committee to look into the additional cost that it would, it would be?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, the size of the town doesn't matter, because most cities, I'm sorry, not cities, but most towns have a certain number of departments. They basically all have one police department, one highway department, one fire department. So the town administrator is not driven necessarily by the size of the population. It's driven by the decision as to how we want to govern ourselves and how do we manage liability and compliance in a more complicated world. But to answer your question, absolutely, one of the things that I've done in my own field as a financial advisor, when we were building teams and I've helped with some organizational projects, is to do salary surveys. And naturally, if there's going to be a recommendation, one of the pathways is to do a town administrator, for example. What administrative assistant would be required and what that salary would be as well. So yeah, that would be part of the, that would be part of the process. Also, let's say that the committee that you charge skipped that. Remember, we're presenting a draft proposal, and then you would kick it back and say, this proposal, I can't accept it because you're missing something. I want to know how much it's going to cost us for the whole deal, not just the town administrator, but also the assistants. So you bring up excellent, excellent points. I'm a taxpayer here. I live at Nine Cherry Tree Lane, Groveland, Mass. I forgot, Sheriff...
I know where you live.
To mention that at the beginning. I never do. I care about what I pay, and, you know, my taxes are going up with everybody else's. But that would, that would be explored, and I think that that would be something that, even if we missed it, I would expect that you would catch that and say, go back to the drawing board. You're missing, you're missing an important chapter in this proposal.
You know, and in addition to whether, you realize that there's different duties and responsibilities between a town administrator and a town manager. It's a different animal.
Absolutely.
And, but nowhere in here, you did mention, I think on the first page, about like an executive secretary. And I would, I would like to know how Merrimack, which is the only one of these 20, how they get away and can run the town of Merrimack with an executive assistant? And they seem to be doing pretty well.
So Merrimack has an administrative assistant to the board, but they function with the finance director. Carol McLeod is their head of the appointed officials over there as the finance director.
But we have a, here, we have a finance, a finance director who also is the treasurer, collector, the chief procurement officer, personnel director. But if you look at some of these other towns, all the 20, you have some of them that have a, not only a town administrator, a assistant, a finance director, a separate treasurer, a separate collector. So I think it would be important for the charge to look at the support staff that's going to be needed and see what that's going to cost us. Because again, I'm just concerned about the adding employees, which not only is weekly pay, it also encompasses retirement benefits, medical, and add all of that stuff up and see where, see whether we're better off the way we're doing it or better going and with the, and, I mean, I feel for some of these senior citizens who are on a, just like social security and maybe a small pension. Where are these people going to get the money? A person like you, you could go and work, work a little extra. But some of these people that are retired, they don't have that luxury. They can't go out and work overtime. You can only get so much money in social security. And, as you know, being a financial advisor, it probably only goes up. Depending, social security, a few dollars a year, and then they take, they take it back with your Medicare. So that's important. What's it going to cost to our senior citizens? And we do have, I would like to hold off on this whole thing until we start getting the tax bill for the new school and see how that's going to affect it. That may change some people's minds with the additional money that we're going to be paying. And we need the school, but what's it going to cost? When, you're going to start getting complaints when people see their tax bill going up. I'm all set on the questions.
I, if I could...
Yeah, you can respond, and then we got to move on to...
I can respond to a couple of those. First of all, I made it pretty clear at the beginning that I, the position would be a conversion of our current finance director and personnel director. So I have no illusion or vision that we would need to have a town administrator or manager of some type plus a finance director. I do see the possibility of an administrative assistant attached to the town manager, which would be very similar to what we have now. So it's not a tremendous cost burden increase by any stretch. One of the important things that this committee will do or should do, in my opinion, is to delineate very clearly what is it that a town manager can do to manage our town in ways that the current position of person, I'm sorry, finance director and personnel director can't do.
Right.
And puts us potentially into situation of either unaddressed compliance issues or liabilities that might be lurking. That's probably an important piece of this study. A nice chapter, one or two pages, that explains with detail that a town manager can do the following things that our current position, not Denise, because Denise does a lot of good things. I'm talking about the position, the way we legally constructed it. Have we gone beyond the scope of that legal construct, of that position? Do we have the danger of doing that? Again, conceptually, the position, not talking about any person, the past or present. And I think once we understand what a town manager can do to benefit this town that a finance director slash personnel director cannot do, and then when you see the differential, the differential on the cost of shutting down a finance director slash personnel director position with an administrative assistant and then reformulating that with a town administrator with an administrative assistant, I think the delta will make sense to people. And then there'll be efficiencies as well. Remember, there'll be decisions as to what departments will be managed by the town administrator. For example, and this is not a suggestion, by the way, it's just conceptually. Conceptually, you can place various departments underneath the town administrator that we don't have today. For example, again, conceptually, not making a suggestion or proposal here. You can place the highway department under the auspices of a town manager, for example. So there are efficiencies. There are also certain areas in our town that we probably know we've got a little bit of problems with. There are areas where we're having a hard time filling boards, okay? The water department is having some difficulties in filling some key positions. You can put the water department underneath the town manager. You can't put it under a finance director slash personnel director. So there are, there are things that can be done. And that chapter, that piece of that proposal, to me, is the most important thing that will show the real reason why a town manager is a natural evolution for this town.
The benefits.
For the benefit, absolutely.
Denise, someone want to speak on Zoom?
Yes, so we have Christina Eckert on Zoom, and she could speak to Boxford's experience. They have five select people in a town manager, and she would like to speak. So Christina, I am unmuting you. If you are there, you can go ahead. Oh, no, hang on a minute.
Jason, we'll go to you next after this, for any questions? Or maybe we'll go to you next.
Hang on, Christina.
Did you lose her?
No, she's on here. It's, oh, wait, but I got to get you on our speakers. Oh, I have to increase the volume. That's funny. Okay, go ahead.
Newman?
It always does work.
It always does this. No, hold on again.
All right, we'll go to Jason while you're doing that. Go ahead. Do you have any questions for Joe?
I just wanted to ask if you were going to cover the duties of what the position was actually going to hold. I know that the board was working on that for quite some time, and whether or not you'd incorporate some of those, that information in to the presentation that you planned on putting together, the report.
A lot of that information is driven by the underlying law that supports it. So MGL, Massachusetts General Law, will be very helpful. And then some of the resources that were on the last slide will also produce some of that information. There'll be templates, for lack of a better word, examples of job descriptions for town manager, town administrator. By the way, I didn't mention, there's also a possibility, we, one of the pathways is we may have a combination town administrator, finance director.
All right, and I know, I understand what Ed is saying with his comments and stuff, but I think that's probably the biggest reason why we need a report like that, is because it'll address all that. It'll uncover anything that isn't or is going to happen in the future. Because I know in most business outlines, the board isn't involved in the day-to-day activity. activities as much as it gets delegated out, and that's how it works efficiently. Because then you have accountability from all the different departments, and I think that's very important for a town to operate that way. And so I'd be excited about it. And to your point about the 90 days, I think that's awesome if we can make that happen because once you get that ball rolling and you get people involved, it doesn't drop off. So you can keep people elevated and formed, and then you get the involvement, where if you let something drag on for a year and a half, it becomes boring, old, and then people lose interest in it.
Okay. How we doing, Denise? Get two cups and a string, or?
Well, I don't know if it's because we're broadcasting, I'm trying to do everything here. Well, we'll see if you can hear her just from here, because it's working here.
You put the microphone up to your computer?
Yeah, I don't know if it's interfering with the...
Does she want to call me?
I think it's trying to broadcast over there, so.
It's wired through this, is what you're saying.
All right, we'll try and see. Okay, Christina, let's try it through here and see if we can hear you.
Hey, sure. Can you hear me now?
We got you.
Okay, they can hear you.
I just, you know, like I said, I live in Boxford. It's a pretty small town, pretty comparable to Groveland. We do have five selectmen, and we do have a town administrator and a finance person, but it works well with the administrator who keeps tabs on everything in town. We kind of all turn to him for answers. He's been here for a long time. And it just, it works out well for the town, and I think it ends up saving us money because he can reach into the history and say, we've done that before, it doesn't work, or it does work, or something like that. So, you know, I just wanted to very briefly tell you that that's what works for us over here.
Great, thank you. Joe, back to you.
Okay, just to wrap things up, I do have another set of slides. I'll go through it relatively quickly because a lot of information is already covered. And I'm going to ask Denise to actually skip a couple of slides and go to this page here. There are two main methods used for establishing a charter. So a different format altogether is to establish what's called an elected charter commission to study the issue of the town manager or town administrator. And then they have, that's time constraint. They have to complete that work within 18 months. Okay, so there's two versions. One is the home rule charter method, which is driven by MGL 43B, 43B 15, some of the towns that are involved. And then there's the special act charter, which is very interesting. That one does not require anything at the ballot because it's driven substantially by the Constitution of Massachusetts. So if you can go to the next page. Home rule charter is an elected charter commission. So the way that works, on an evening of the town meeting, the town meeting decides whether we're going to have nine elected members, like they did in Tewksbury, to form a committee to study how to implement a town charter, which is very formalized. And it's actually, you don't have as many choices, you have less creativity. The laws will drive what departments you must have. Again, I bring this out, I don't think it's the way that this town should go, but I believe it needs to be in the report just so we can educate people. You have an initial election to see if the town wants to engage in the charter process that's done at the town meeting plus at the ballot. A week later, a max, then, so if town meeting, we say yes, we want a charter commission, there are nine people that are running for that seat to be on this commission. And then a week later, 18 months to put a document together. And they must appear, and that also has to appear on the ballot. The special act, you appoint a charter commission. Process is very strictly defined by law. You have to have lots of public hearings, no time constraints, you can take all the time in the world, and something that maybe selectmen, castorals would not feel comfortable with, and no, you can't put it on a ballot. So let's take a look at the last, the next slide, please. The charter process is very formalized. Departments are mandated. Lines of authority are clearly delineated by law. Effectively reformulates government by charter, very different than by the special legislation that we were just talking about. I don't think this is the way to go. Next slide, please. But I just wanted to present that, and I haven't done a lot of study on it. Now, if we can go to the first slide, and I know Castoralis, I believe, has a comment or a question. Let's go to the first slide. What prompts a community to examine its local government structure? Some generalities here, inability to attract candidates to serve in either elected or appointed office. We have a little bit of that issue going on, has been for a few years. Perception that municipal departments are not communicating their coordinating functions as they should. An increase in population. We have a housing boom going on. We've got a lot of things going on, but we've got a lot of good things that have gone on. I mean, I'm very proud of this town. We don't have any major projects that I see. I mean, the parks are built, our streets are paved, at least the main ones. We're getting through the rest a little bit at a time. We've got amazing services. We really get some really good services, especially for the money that we spend as taxpayers. We don't have a problem, as it says here on the list, poor town meeting attendance, so I would scratch that off the list. But there, and I believe that this report will show you that there is a greater, a need for greater oversight of financial matters and service delivery. So the next slide, I won't go into this detail. There's 19 steps that Tewksbury engaged in by using the home rule charter method. And then if you flip to the page after that, two pages later, there's the appointed charter committee, there's 14 steps. Again, I would probably have this in the report briefly touched. And again, when this report is delivered to you, the board of selectmen, as a draft, you say, wait, wait, we want you to go back, send this proposal back to the committee. We want to learn a lot more about this. Well, then I would engage fully in a deeper study of the charter method. Again, I don't think it's, you know, I think it's a level of complexity and lack of inflexibility that could also drive a higher cost because we're going to be told what departments we need. And I, I'm not on a committee and it will allow me an opinion, I would think that that's probably not where we want to go. But I wanted to share this with you just briefly, that there is, that's why I call it an alternate method. And I highlight it in yellow because it's warning, warning, it's a totally different way and it's complicated. That's my presentation. I really appreciate your time and having this opportunity, and I'll certainly entertain any questions and see for any deliberation.
No, that was, that was good. That was very informative. Actually highlighted a lot of the discussions that we've had over the last couple of years trying to move towards this, which has been talked about in depth for a number of years, is the reasons why. And you highlighted it a couple of times that, you know, we're a volunteer board, and we're only here typically every two weeks. So personnel problems, personnel decisions, everyday activity, everyday finances, everyday everything in town hall, if it gets to our level, it's only addressed every two weeks, where a town manager, town administrator can take care of that more readily, can address residents' opinions or needs more readily, as opposed to us waiting every two weeks at best. Denise?
So Kathy, yes, I just sent this out to the board. Here is the definition of when things can be a binding ballot question and when it cannot.
Thank you.
So it cannot be as set forth in Mass. Donal Law, Chapter 53, Section 18A. So there is your reasoning why it cannot be a binding ballot question.
Anybody have any quick questions? Because we've already been on this for about an hour.
No, just kind of a quick statement. I just looked back through the notes I took. Everybody made really good points. Jason's point on accountability, I think, is a big thing because that falls into one of your charts on ensuring that we are in compliance with all the laws and all things that the town is supposed to be doing, which is very difficult to do as an elected selectman, you know, unless we have somebody who can tell us what's going on on a daily basis. I totally agree that with Ed's statement that we're a little light on clerical help, and I think we've known that for a while. We had a real superstar, Denise, who I think wore so many hats that I lost track. But she took us from a place of just a financial director to a place where her leaving the town clearly demonstrates that we need to have at least somebody bring to the people what could we do, what could we afford to do without raising taxes that could somehow capture some of this administrative oversight. And just wanted to point out for people that are watching the show that myself personally, when the idea of having a town planner was brought to the finance committee, I was sort of not on board with it. I thought, what will this person do all day? Won't this cost more money? Yes, this is going to cost more money, which gives us less money to put in another department. But this town plan, I believe, has saved her salary and grants, and has saved the town, I know for a fact, from having to hire outside consultants. That would have been at a much higher rate. I recall we spent $100,000 for a town master plan once, and I think we just put it on a shelf. So having an active person here, not only has she saved money that's paid for her salary, but she saved the town from hiring outside consultants and just putting reports on a shelf. And our full-time fire chief already has brought in grants for cleaning of fire gear and is seeking grants for fire trucks. So keep in mind that when you hire the right people in the right positions, they save us money, even if we spend some money. But you get what you pay for, definitely. And we got a lot with Denise here. It was worth it. Thank you for the presentation.
Jason?
Thank you very much. It's very informative, and I look forward to having something in the future.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, obviously you put in a lot of time and effort into this, and I want to thank you because nobody asked you to do it. You did it on your own. And I believe you did it for the benefit of all your neighbors in Groveland, not just for personal reasons. So I want to thank you because it shows to the point about money. I'm a taxpayer in this town too, Joe. Nobody likes to spend money any less than I do. I hate spending money. But I also realize that sometimes to get greater value, you spend a little more money. And that's, I think that's what you're going to, or this committee is going to prove out, that we can obtain greater value, an enhanced experience, greater communication, greater flexibility, greater, shall we say, what's the word? I'm looking for accountability and enhancement for everybody through this, through the way it going. And I want to thank you for all the work you've done, and I look forward to seeing more of your work on this because I think it's very informative. So thank you.
Ed?
No, I think I already said what I had to. I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. So, thank you. We'll take this information and figure out a way to move forward. I would like to move forward sooner than later. I think your 90 days is aggressive. I think it's going to take some time to get people on board to volunteer for this. As you stated, we have an issue with getting people to volunteer for different committees.
Point of order, my 90 days did not include the recruitment phase.
Oh, so now you adjusted it. All right. So now that we have the real number in place, we're going to have to adjust that back.
Might have an easy summer.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe, appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Stay safe.
So we have direction of the town. I think that was kind of included in that a little bit, but...
Well, if you wanted to form a committee, we could certainly post something. That's kind of depends on how you want to proceed.
I'm in favor of pretty much everything that Joe said. I mean, we've been working for this for years. I mean, this goes back to, I think, the first time I was, the first year I was on the board, this discussion was happening. So I'm in favor of moving forward. I'm in favor of doing some kind of committee and putting the charge on people that want to volunteer to be part of this and getting it going sooner than later, but I am only one person. So let's go around the horn. Jason?
Yeah, I'm all for it.
Okay. Kathy?
I'm for it.
Bill?
I've said it before, it's a natural evolution of every town. I think that it's, we've gone beyond that point.
Ed?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the committee to study it. I don't know about the makeup of the committee, but we, maybe we could solicit people to be on the committee. And, but I don't want to limit it to just people that are in favor of it. I want to, I want to hear the other side of the coin.
I don't think we're limiting it to just people in favor. I think people who want to be involved with it, it should be admitted to the committee. I don't think it should be based on their opinion.
You always need, you always need two sides to weigh in.
Yeah?
I guess I'm going to have a big problem with that because we're in agreement that we should move forward in this direction. I agree with hearing opposing views, but if we're going to set this committee up that way, I think we're setting it up to fail because in its origins, it's divisive. They're not all in agreement, they're not all pulling the rope in the same direction. If we want to form a committee that's going to explore how we get to a town manager, then all those people may be on board with the idea that that's the way the town should move. If there's one dissenting person in that opinion, that committee is doomed to failure and will never get off the ground because they can never agree that this is the direction that needs to be, needs to be taken. So I'm a thousand percent agreement that we should get opinions from all opposing sides, every side, whether it be a thousand sides or two sides. But to set up the committee that way is just a recipe for instant failure, in my opinion.
So does someone want to make a motion on this?
I just, I wanted to just clarify that. I thought Joe made it very clear that he did not want this committee to get tangled up in the debate that we've been having. And honestly, this decision belongs to the people, the people of Groveland, not to some of us sitting in a room together. So the charge, I think the one thing you have to be clear on is the charge of the committee. And the charge shouldn't be limited to just a town manager. It should be to look at bringing in an administrative oversight to the town, whether they come up with two proposals or three or four, I don't care. But come up with something to show to us, and then we can read it down. We have to give them a clear charge, right? So if we're going to make a motion to form a committee, we need to make the charge clear.
Go ahead.
Should go ahead and, okay. So I would move that we form a committee of anywhere from five to nine members, cap it at nine, to prepare documentation on how the town could function with some form of administrative oversight, combining that with our financial director position. I mean, we're not interested in another standalone position, I believe. So they could come forward with one proposal or two along the way, that's fine. But we're looking for what this would look like and what the duties would be.
Is there a second, so we can have discussion?
Yeah, I'll second that because we need discussion.
Further discussion?
Further discussion. I'd like the word "could" changed to "would" in that original proposal only because we're not looking at, I don't think they should look at what it could look like. I think they should look at what it would look like.
Okay, very good. I accept.
The other thing, I think we should be very specific with our charges, so there's no misunderstanding or mincing of words. Language is so important. So I'd like to see a little finer clarification of what their duties are going to be. For example, to explore how other towns did it, to present the presentation to this board that would spell out duties, cost... that would spell out duties, costs, positions required, ancillary positions that may be required, any other specifics, I mean...
Additional assistance that may be required?
Yeah, that's, yeah, with ancillary, additional ancillary positions that would be...
I heard you. I didn't hear what he said.
I think it's the same thing, basically.
I dumbed it down, though.
You dumbed it down.
He turned your head, though, too.
Just so, this, this committee doesn't run off the rails in any way. And I know in the past, language is so important because if anything's vague, open for interpretation, open for debate, then the politics gets involved. And I don't want to see politics get involved in this. This is a very easy, clear cut, this is what we need you to do.
I think, I think Joe's, second page of Joe's thing, Town Government Study Committee, it spells it out pretty good. Purpose: To advise on establishing a town manager, administrator, coordinator, or executive secretary in accordance with Chapter 41, 23A. And it looks like to look at...
Page two?
It's page two of his...
Page two of the Town Government Study Committee. It explains, look at all four and maybe look at, see which is best for the town of Groveland.
Even more specific. I like it.
Jason, do you want to add anything?
No, I think, I think that's exactly what he has in mind. And I think the best thing about it is we're going to present it as a draft form. We get to read it, go over it, and then if we need more information or want to point them in an additional direction, it's something that we can do, which is exactly what he said.
And I think we can provide that, that spreadsheet that we did last year where we outlined where certain duties would fall for a town administrator. Remember that? Kathy had it like a week or two ago.
Yeah, we did it with Bill.
Yes.
What I did, what a town manager does, what other people should do, what I took over. I mean, we had all that.
I think that'll be helpful in outlining that kind of job.
I mean, I think they'll do their own, but we can give them whatever. We have salary surveys.
Well, that's by no means all...
But it's probably a good help. Kathy?
I just want to make the clarification that, Ed, is this the page we're talking about?
Yes.
Because there's a lot of pages here. Okay, so this page?
Primarily that last paragraph.
Yeah, well, it says, the purpose, where it says, "Purpose to advise on establishing a town manager, administrator, coordinator."
Yes.
Yes, from there to the bottom is really what the charge would be if that's what your, amend your motion, I guess, or withdraw your motion and have a new motion, however you want to handle it.
No, no, no. I like this because that was going to be my follow-up, that there be like some information meetings included and survey material.
So do you want to withdraw your original motion?
I think that'd be best, except that I do feel that it should be five to nine members. We should cap it at nine.
So withdraw that original motion, issue a new motion adding five to nine members based on that outline.
And then that. And do you want to call it a Town Government Study Committee?
That works for me.
Yeah, my wife.
Anybody else have any input on that? I don't think it really matters all that much.
No, that's fine.
All right, so we got a new motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. So we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think we hammered that out.
We've included the research of costs and other positions as well in that charge, right? We've included that the cost of such...
Well, I can if you want to add that as this, to a friendly amendment to the new motion.
Yes.
Because the other motion was withdrawn.
That was part of what he initially said because it's not in the motion, so let's add that.
And any other additional...
Ancillary positions.
Right. I like that word.
Yeah.
I don't want to give it too wide a scope, though, so just evaluate this question primarily and if they want to add some other positions. But, you know what I mean? I don't want them all over the place adding positions. This is so clean-cut.
To Ed's point, the cost and maybe any additional cost for administrative assistance that might come in.
And to my point, I don't want this to be a ping-pong match where we just keep bouncing back and forth. If we give them that charge, maybe it's a little bit broader than we want, but when they come back to us in 90 days, hopefully they have the information so we don't have to keep going back. What's the cost of this? How many positions are we going to add? And going back and forth, back and forth. I think we streamline it if we throw all that in and let them look at it all, "amas", and then bring it all back to us, "amas" in one presentation. This is what we're looking at. This is going to be the cost. This is how many additional, that we think we're going to need, bup, 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 bup. And then from there, we have a lot of information that we can suggest modifications or, you know.
Could we, is it going to be a bullet here? I just, I need to see this specifically. When you go bup, 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 I'm not quite sure what we're putting on this box.
She has it. Denise has the whole outline of what we're going to adding.
So, right. So I think what it will be is the Town Government Study Committee will have five to nine members. I'm assuming you'll stick with an odd number. To advise on establishing a town manager, administrator, coordinator, executive secretary in accordance with Chapter 41, Section 23A, this ad hoc committee will be charged with the following: to produce data, information, and actionable steps for voters to evaluate the need for changing town government functions; to review the duties of the position, costs associated with it, ancillary positions that may be needed; and to champion seven public participation activities to lead the town to decide by way of a study group, survey, informational meetings, annual town meeting, ballot questions, statehouse hearings, and publicly available resources.
So you added it into that one?
Yes. So it would really be bullet point number two because you'd like these things done before they do the public participation activities.
Exactly. Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second discussion. Denise, you can't leave because of that. All those in favor?
Yeah.
All right, unanimous. All right, so we're moving, we're moving.
I will post this tomorrow on the website to solicit members.
All right, so moving on, we have finance-directed job description and job posting. So at the last meeting, there's a little bit of a conundrum about where we're going with this job posting. So did everybody have a chance to look over the position description that Denise had given to us, even though I know that doesn't incorporate everything that she has done, and want to have a discussion on how we move forward with either posting it for the same position as written, an interim position, to have that bridge for when Denise is gone or what we're going to do? So who wants to talk? Besides Kathy?
Okay.
No, go ahead.
Are you calling?
No, go ahead.
I think you look the other way. So I was just like in my head today, kind of going through this because we did so much with the timelines that we have a financial director in-house until August 13th. We know from some of the information you've shared with us about, that you feel that you have very competent people, at least in your assistant treasurer, collector, very competent, could potentially step up for additional amount if we needed it to become...
Well, as the treasurer collector.
Correct. I understand that.
Yep.
Okay. So, so my, my thought process, like things just sitting from a managerial point of view is that as of August 13th, we do not have a financial director in the House. And so at the same time, we've just voted to appoint a committee to just, to spend 90 days or whatever determining whether or not we're going to change that position. So that's why I lean very strongly towards a interim financial director in collaboration with Denise's recommendation. By that, I mean like we could have perhaps somebody come out of retirement or somebody who wants only a few days a week to come in to assist and check on things and provide us with the expense and revenue reports that normally Denise would be reviewing. And we're going to have to have somebody who's in charge even while Denise is on vacation. She's on, she's moving on, and we have to, we have to let her go. And I feel that an interim financial director posting with limited duties would be our best bet. If we could find someone who's capable of tracking the personnel data, you know, the vacations and all, that would be helpful to us, as well as the financial background to know procurement laws and, and reports and compliance and make sure we're doing everything as ordered by town meeting. That's kind of my biggest concern. When I look through, I know Denise did a lot more than that for us. I feel like Caitlin stepped up for a while and helped us with our packets, so she's at least familiar with how we organize our meetings. She might be able to be helpful to us with that if we speak to her. But I feel like we need to fill, fill in that part-time position in that department to give her some additional support. And then the other side, I'm a little wondering whether we want to put a brand-new person in that needs training while we're trying to struggle through the transition phase. So my, my biggest concern is the interim financial director. And if Caitlin is able to help as the treasurer collector, we negotiate with her for that additional responsibility, and we go from there.
So I understand what you're saying about that.
One, just one last thing I forgot to say.
Hold on. I understand what you're saying about that. My concern is that we're going to go through this process twice. We're going to do a round for an interim, and then we're going to do a round at some point for a full-time, possibly, town administrator.
Correct.
Right. So we're going to go through this process twice. I would like to do something where we leave it a little open-ended, where if we have the right person that's not just wants to do it part-time, but understands that this board is pushing or at least advocating for a town administrator, town planner, or town manager, that that person that we hire in that interim would be ideally looking for a full-time role in that new form of government. But that's just me. You want to add something?
Well, the only thing I wanted to add is that if we, I guess, I understand where you're coming from. If we did go interim, though, with a reduced number of days, we might also then also draw on Denise's offer as a consultant on Fridays just to ensure that the finances of the town are secure. I guess that's my biggest worry is that as we transition, whether we do it your way or part-time, whatever, I want to make sure that everything that we got to with you is still there. And I wouldn't mind paying a consultant fee to make sure that that's happening. This is the best that we've ever had our finances in as far as the good shape that they're in. And that was the one thing that the Glenn Kempler from, wasn't everybody warned me about. He said, "When you go to the interim, just make sure that everything you think is getting done is actually getting done." Okay? So I'm negotiable on the other thing. I was sort of leaving it up.
Ed?
If you're going to go the route of an interim director, finance director, you need to look at the hours. On page two, the bullet item, one up from the bottom, lists that should be available in the town hall, a minimum of 35 to 40 hours a week. If you're going to go interim, and what Kathy had just said was, you know, come in a few days a week. So that would have to be adjusted using this model here. And then, and I just had a question. Under supervisory responsibilities, I'll read the whole thing. The finance director is treasurer, collector, and budget officer of the town should be responsible for the supervision of the assistant treasurer, assistant collector, and town accountant, including the hiring, review, evaluation, and our dismissal thereof. I thought it was up to the board of selectmen to make the appointments and to dismiss somebody if they're not up to snuff. And that, just a question on that.
This has been in place for five years, right?
That's right out of the special legislation. We don't function that way. I've recommended positions to the board out of respect for the board's authority, but yes, I could hire and fire as I chose based on the special legislation that was passed here.
Anything else, Ed?
No, not right now.
Bill? Not yet. I'm listening. All right. Jason?
Well, I think to your point, an interim position is while we explore other options that are available. And that position should always be considered for change or incorporation into the upgraded position, or whether it becomes just another finance director and no longer an interim position. I think that should be just pretty standard. So I'm all for going for an interim position. I don't know if it needs to be part-time because the interim position, I think, is going to be paid at a substantial amount less than what a current finance director is getting paid for, which would also cover the additional need for a clerical administrative assistant for the board of selectmen. Those funds are already set aside and allocated, so they'll be there.
Do you want to make a point?
Yeah, so just a couple of things. If you choose to go with an interim, I think you should go with an interim regardless whether you look to hire a full-time and the same thing, or whether you look to hire a part-time. Because I think it should be clear to that person that you are going through, or you're starting the process to discuss a town manager. I don't think it would be fair to someone to give up their job and come here if you just post a finance director, and then they're here six months and you say, "Oh, by the way, now we're going to look to make a town manager." You know, the hope would be that they're qualified, but I think they should know that upfront. I think it's important, what I, you know, what Kathy touched on earlier, I think you need to figure out what your main focus should be of this interim position. If you're going to do part-time, what are the important priorities? You think you may have some complications finding what you statutorily need, which is a finance director, budget officer, treasurer, collector, procurement officer. I think finding all of those, which you have to find a certified treasurer, collector that's looking to step up as a finance director. That might be difficult, especially if it's a part-time or an interim. So I think if you choose to focus on sort of personnel, procurement, and financial oversight, and then yes, give Caitlin more authority as the assistant. She does more of the treasurer, collector role. This person still holds that title because statutorily it has to. I think that's probably a better way to go, and will give you some more options when you're looking to hire somebody. I will tell you, I was contacted by MRI Consulting, who did our finance, I'm sorry, our fire department review. They also have a recruitment section. If you need their resources, they can certainly help you on recruiting or putting together something. If you'd like to speak to them, I can put you in contact with them, but they did reach out to me as well. So I think it's just important to figure out what you want in, like I said, I would go interim, even if you do a full-time interim. It should be clear that it's interim while you're figuring out whether or not you're going to move to the next step. I will just remind you, unless you schedule other meetings, I'm only here for two more meetings. So if you don't decide tonight, you either need another meeting, or we'd have to have something posted after July 20th so that you get something out and start getting responses back.
I think the, the part-time interim is, like you said, is going to be tough.
Okay.
I think we're going to have to basically search for this job posting responsibility as it includes everything here in the hopes that we will find someone that can do as much of this as possible in the interim and is looking for a short-term position.
Yeah, and I guess, I mean, when I see like this, going through duties and responsibilities, coordinating with the town departments, the collection of budget and financial information, yes, we need the interim to do that. The second thing I feel like are in, are in place already, thanks to Denise. That's why our audit reports are so good. Grant proposals, I would put a hold on that unless somebody needs, doesn't know how to write their own. Most of our department heads seem to be doing their own grant proposals. It's mainly the procurement, financial oversight, the budgets, making sure that the town departments are adhering to the budgets voted by town meeting and going through the budget process with us. That's where we're going to need some help. And the personnel is, you know, who's on vacation, who's not on vacation.
So basically, the whole thing.
No, I, I agree with the recommendation that Caitlin could step up so we wouldn't need somebody who was a certified treasurer, collector.
Right.
Because Caitlin can, can handle that, which should make this appeal to someone who has all the other stuff but not that.
Denise?
Just for clarification purposes, the bullet point that Ed brought up earlier with the hours, which is the second to the last on page two?
Yes.
That's where the special legislation ended. Everything after that was added on. So if you, so you could certainly look at just the special legislation piece, or you could look at a whole combination of. But just so you're aware, that's what the special legislation includes.
And as you said, Kathy, Caitlin can take on part of this, but we have to approach her with it.
Correct. Kind of highlighted in green, she's green.
Right. And I mean, you certainly could post it, and if you, I mean, you could wait... Right, and I mean, you certainly could post it and if you, I mean, you could wait on that and post it and if you just don't get someone that has the treasurer collector certification, speak with her. If you get someone with the treasurer collector, it might not be stronger on personnel or other things that may be a priority. It really depends on, you know, if you post it as is and see what kind of experience you get coming in and then you figure out what you need to do here. It's really however or whatever type of people you think are going to apply.
Well, that's just it, we don't know. So I think the wider the shotgun, the better, my approach. Bill, did you want to?
I'm just thinking that, you know, typically in my life, in my line of work, I have positions open, have a hard time hiring, and I'm not sure what I want yet. I'd reach out to folks like Robert Half, Winter Wyman, K-Force, people that can give me temp to perm, hire, a contract, or somebody to get me by for a while. Are there any kind of agencies that typically deal specifically in filling these kind of municipal slots?
Well, so you have like the consultants, like the MRI consultants that will recruit. And if they don't see enough resumes coming in or enough experience of what you want, they will make phone calls to people they know in the business. There really aren't a lot of sort of temp to perm. There are a handful of retired folks that will fill in as an interim. The last few years, there's been a lot of turnover in town manager. I mean, I think you'd probably be better off with a retired town administrator because they've already handled a lot of these duties. Again, not the treasurer collector piece, but they may be looking for work as long as they stay under the required hours. You know, they may come in here for a couple of days a week. I don't know, again, it depends what you're looking for. If you're looking for sort of a part-time, I don't know that you're going to get someone that's going to give up their full-time job.
Right.
Somewhere else to come here. So if you're looking for the interim piece, part-time, I think you could possibly get a retired town administrator. You could get a retired finance director that lives in the area that's looking for just a couple of days a week. Again, what they will have for experience, if it's a town administrator, it's very unlikely they'll have the treasurer collector piece.
And I think that's part of the, my dilemma is that we don't know what we're going to get in order to figure out what path we're going to move forward on. So it's kind of just like, put the job posting out there and then get the responses and then figure out which road we got to take in the, in the short term.
Well, you could post an interim and see how that goes. And if you don't get resumes after 30, 45 days.
That's, I think too long.
Come up with a plan B.
That's the problem that I have is that 30 or 45 days is too long, right? I'm looking like a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
So that's why I've had a hard time figuring out which road I would prefer because we don't know. And if we make a mistake in figuring out the road that we don't want to take and then we lose two or three weeks, then that's no good.
You'd be better off with an interim full-time because then someone would be more likely to leave a job to come here if it's a better opportunity, more experience.
Or a retired person would take that full-time.
Well, you couldn't get a retired person full-time. So retired, you'd stick with the part-time piece.
How are they limited?
960 hours a year.
A year, so they could be here full-time though for a period, well, yeah, it wouldn't take us as long.
Under this COVID-19, the bringing somebody in part-time, they've changed the, the, I'm not sure about the hours, but the money that you pay them. They can, they can earn basically whatever they want. They were limited to a certain amount of money before, but under this COVID-19, however long it lasts, bringing somebody in that's retired, they, as far as the money that you pay them, it, it doesn't count towards their, what they need, what their maximum. And I, I don't know about the hours, but the 960 hours.
Right, so as long as state of emergency is in effect for COVID, they've waived the PARAC requirements for retirees. So they can exceed 960 hours and exceed the cap on the money they were able to earn. So for towns that are having difficulties right now, you could bring back retirees to work in a full-time capacity.
Without retraining them.
And they wouldn't be penalized, but that will only be in effect until the state of emergency ends.
And that's another, we have no idea.
It could be three months, it could be a year. You would be fine right now because it's calendar year basis. So you could certainly bring someone in and they could work full-time until December 31st and then go to 960 hours if it's a retiree and if the state of emergency is lifted.
So that might be an actual good route is to have that understanding that we bring someone in knowing that it's pretty much state of emergency till the end of the year. And then if you're worried about that cap and how it affects retirement and stuff, you scale that back until we find that full-time position at that point.
Right.
But then we're going through this twice, which is what I didn't want to do, but.
And if you post full-time interim, a retiree, they're going to know that because they all got the PARAC bulletin that came out.
Right.
So they may want to apply for it if they see full-time and interim. I mean, that might be appealing to a retiree, even if it is full-time.
So we could do full-time slash interim and then see what happens? Yeah.
I, I still would like to advocate that while Denise is still here, if we, if we want to just have Caitlin step up to this, I'd like to do that while Denise is still here to make sure that's a smooth transition for Caitlin. And then, you know, when you hire somebody, they're probably not going to be the treasurer collector. We're, we're looking more administrative and financial oversight. When we created this financial director position, all we cared about was finances. This was a long time ago and we never had anything like this. And as you can see from our big spreadsheet, it's grown to a lot more, even under Greg, it continued to grow.
Right, but it still goes back to a couple of points where we're relying on Caitlin to accept.
Yes.
A lot of things that we haven't even asked her about.
Well, it'd be.
Assume that she'll want to because it comes with more pay and more whatever, but we're assuming that she'll want to do that, okay. And then this other route that we have to consider. So I understand that we can mitigate part of this, but we still have to find out which way we want to go with this job posting. And I want to get that done tonight because I want to get that posted and I don't want to waste more time because we have limited time with Denise being in the office. She'll be on the payroll until October 9th or something and then possibly Friday.
Until 2021 at this point.
Right, but, I mean, we can't, we can't hold you hostage here to, you know, keep us afloat forever. So getting this out and getting it done, whatever way we want to do, we want to get it done tonight, get it posted and see what kind of feedback we get. And then make the decision which route we want to go, whether it's an interim for the end of the year, someone retired, whether it's full-time and it's going to be for at least a year until we get the town administrator discussion going. There's a lot of things in play here, but getting something out today, which is what I wanted to do last week, but getting something out today is paramount. So let's, let's focus on getting something out today.
Yeah, the hours, I'm not sure, are irrelevant right now. Typically 40 hour a week, 50 weeks a year, you're looking at 2,000 hours a year, right? We're already into July, so even if we brought on somebody onboard starting next Monday, with the time left in the year, I don't think they could hit that 960-hour threshold. And then hopefully by the first half of next year, we have somebody in place. So they, the 960-hour threshold may not come into play, provided they haven't already had any other hours somewhere else.
Right, but I think your statement that come the first of the year, we may have somebody in place, I think your interim would be in place in a minimum of a year if you're looking, if Joe's committee is looking to target the 2021 town meeting. You know, let's just say it goes to 2021 town meeting, it passes, it goes to legislation, you're looking at six, four to six months to go through that process. So you're looking at this time next year, you could be theoretically posting a town manager, which could then take.
Oh, that's aggressive too.
Right, but I'm just saying.
But that's a very valid point.
You would be looking at a 12 to 18-month interim is what I would say. At a, at a minimum.
So you're looking at January 22.
Or a maximum. If it fails, then you would post the position to hire this person full-time permanent, depending on what their status is.
Okay, so, yeah, I, I've never got to a place where I didn't know where I wanted to be and I've never found something that I wasn't, I didn't know what I was looking for, but I, I think this is.
Right?
Yeah, I, I mean, but I think given, given where we are today and knowing what the future holds in a very short order, I think moving quickly and expeditiously on bringing in somebody interim, interim, full-time is, I mean, paramount at this point in time.
Yep.
So you could say interim full-time, you could say 30 hours and then that would leave some hours a week. You could say 20, I mean, I just, you know, are you going to want them to attend your meetings? I would assume so. Do you want them in the office then Monday through Friday in addition to your meetings, in addition to Monday night? So, you know, you could have someone here just Monday through Thursday and not do Monday nights and Fridays and cut down on the hours. Someone might like a four-day work week. So there are different things to consider when you talk about full-time.
Right. I would put, I mean, I would say flexible on that because.
Right, I mean, it's going to be an exempt position under FLSA anyways, but you would want an expectation of a number of hours in the office.
Well, on here, you have what, 35 to 40?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I would say probably 30 to 35, but, I mean, that's up to the board. Jason, what do you think, hours?
I think full-time covers it. I don't think we have to be that specific because I think we're going to determine that depending on who we talk to. And that's when we'll make that decision.
Yeah, so whether it's what, 21 hours or 40 hours, it's still benefit eligible and all that stuff, right?
It's still benefit eligible.
Right, so that doesn't matter. So you're right, it's just, at that point, what are we looking for? Ed, do you have anything else?
No, I'd, I'd go along with the, on interim and specify the hours. You may not need anybody 40 hours, see what you get. You're going to get somebody. There's, there's people out there that maybe retirees that would, would grab it. And that seems to be the route to go.
Yep.
I have a question about the MRI and whether or not it might be worth it for maybe Mike or chairman to have a conversation with them about whether they, because they can reach out to people and in addition to us just waiting for responses, could, could they help us get this done more efficiently?
I guess the question becomes what's the cost?
Right, for cost, I'm sure.
Exactly, well, that's why I'm saying.
Is it $5,000 or $10,000 like we did last time?
Right, so, well, it's all different.
Right.
So you could use them for any amount of recruitment, if you will. You could have resumes go to them, they would screen them, they do the first round and screen people out and then give you sort of candidates that are worthy based on the job description. You could have them probably do pieces of that where you guys take the resumes and they just help with some of the process. They can pretty much offer anything. So I can give you their number. It's a different group than the one that did the consultant review, but they're all former town managers and this is what they do. They recruit now for other towns.
I mean, I'd be interested to see what the cost is. I just, you know, we're all cost weary about spending extra money on things, especially when we don't know what these other things are going to cost going forward, so.
So speaking of costs, what do you, what do you want a salary for the interim position?
We say flexible?
Well, you need something for people to apply. You can have a range. I mean, you can say it depends on qualifications, but that's what people are going to ask is what the salary is. So you should have some idea of that if you.
I think anybody applying for a finance director's position will have a general idea of what they're going to be making just from what's on line.
Right, they'll all go right to the budget and look it up.
Yeah.
But if that's not what you're planning to pay, then you should put that in a job description, in the posting.
Is there a reason why we would pay less than that?
Yes.
Yes.
Because I don't think we're going to get the same quality.
Correct.
I agree.
Of what we have that's walking out the door. And I don't think we have the same expectations or the same level of responsibilities.
I mean, we can leave it, it depends on qualifications and just see what happens.
On qualifications and experience.
Yeah, qualifications and experience and.
Negotiable, commensurate with qualifications, like you see every frigging ad right now and that.
Correct, yeah.
And then, you know what? Do another thing they all do in, in the ads, is this still legal in Massachusetts? Give your salary expectations. Ask them what they think they're worth. So then we can exclude, you know, if they come in at $250,000, we can toss them right out. They come in 50, we'll talk. But, you know, this, this way.
Stand twice?
It gives us opportunity to weed out people that we know that are just not going to fit because they're not within our budget. We can't afford it. We're not, we're not going to look at a Mercedes because all we can afford right now is a Chevy. So we can exclude a lot of those people if we put that in there and they tell us what they want. Now we know what.
I would say commensurate with experience, but.
So am I posting the exact same job description with everything that's on there as interim? With a, with a note that the expectation is the town is, or the town is exploring a town manager study committee?
I was just going to ask someone to make a motion.
Yeah, I make, I'll make the motion that we advertise the position as described, full-time interim, with the understanding that town is moving toward or will be looking to move toward a town manager, that the salary of the job will be commensurate with experience and qualifications. And I think we start there. You got to throw the line out in the water to see if you get any fish, right?
And do you want it for 30 days on MMA, which is, it should go on MMA regardless of your website? But so 30 days is the minimum.
Yep.
And do you want, we could certainly put in there, open until filled with resumes reviewed or preference given to resumes received by and then put the 30-day mark so that you can at least start acting on resumes?
Okay.
Sure.
That works?
Works for me.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
I would suggest that just, well, no, not on that, nevermind, nevermind. I'm just going to, I just want to get to the MRI, but I don't think we should use them until we strike out because they're going to be, they're going to be expensive. I know it.
Well, I'll have a call with them to find out, but we'll do this first because I'm not going to get to them until later this week anyways. All right. All those in favor?
Yep.
All right, all right, so we've got a couple of things done tonight. Good stuff.
So far.
All right, so now we're moving on to Perry Park discussion. What are we talking about with Perry Park?
So if I may.
Oh. Yeah, sorry.
It's okay. So if you'll recall, this came in back in May regarding the land at Perry Park where people are now parking. I stand with the highway superintendent, the building inspector, and the town planner. Rennie didn't have much of a take on it other than he thinks putting a fence up would be too expensive because I asked about putting a fence up if they think that would be the best approach. Sam absolutely thinks they're on town property. He would glad to stop over, he'd be glad to stop by and speak with owners around the area and formally if you think it might help. Rebecca suggested that step one be to take down the baseball fence because we don't use it as a baseball fence and it acts as a barrier for unofficial parking. And as part of then the open space and recreation plan efforts, you could explore the benefits of the use of the park by putting in a community garden, benches, et cetera, that would take up use of it. I would recommend that the first step be, we could have the police put sort of flyers on the cars and let them know that that is town property and they should find alternative parking. How you want to handle it after that, it's up to you.
Well, it's basically the same thing as Sam taking a visit saying that this is not permitted for parking, correct?
It was no permit for parking.
Well, I mean, just any parking, right? Just.
Right, well, I mean, it's town park land and as you can see, so there was like two people, I think, that live across the street that were parking there. I think they're rental properties. The new spots, I think, is the house directly adjacent to it that cleared, that actually cleared our land and put parking.
They filled it in too, right?
Yes, and now people are parking on King Street on the park, sort of along King Street, they're parking up a ways on the park itself.
Really? Not on the street but on the grass area?
On the grass area. So there's, I think, three distinctive parking locations that people are parking regularly now on Perry Park.
So I would be in favor of Sam visiting at least the side on Main Street there where they had filled in and created their own kind of parking area. Clearly that's a no-no. And then I would also be in favor of the police taking action on the parking on King Street side because that seems to be a different violation than just filling in your own parking structure. That's my take.
Right.
Anybody else? Yeah, Ed?
Yeah, that doesn't, that, that's a good start, but it doesn't, it doesn't address the cutting of wood on the town property, piling dirt, making the parking lot larger.
Well, there's no parking lot there, that's the problem. It's not making anything larger, there's no parking lot there. They made a parking lot.
They made a parking lot? Yeah, I mean, we want to take it, to get it out of there.
Yeah.
There was, there was a, at one time, there was an old culvert there that went directly into the, into the river. I don't know if that still exists down there. But that's a good start.
Police and Sam? Police and Sam on that?
Yeah, yeah.
I would just recommend before the police take action, we give them a notice like we do with the winter parking ban.
Yeah.
You know, you have two weeks, get your car out before we start taking action with parking tickets. I mean, they can issue violations.
Yeah, I'm not saying they go and issue tickets. It's more of a, hey, you can't park here. This isn't a parking structure. This isn't, you know, more of a informative thing or than saying, here, here's a $200 fine for parking on the grass you're not supposed to park on. Jason?
Yeah, I think, I'd like to do something a little different. If you drive by there, somebody cut back the bushes a little bit so you can see the speed limit sign. But that's almost overgrown all the way to the street. So I don't know if they're native plants or invasive plants, but I'd like to see that all cut back and wrapped, put down, and then designate it for parking for Perry Park. So you can post signs that say sunrise to sunset parking for Perry Park, and then you have something that's enforceable. And then you actually open it up for people to utilize the park. Because right now, if you don't have that parking, then the park never gets utilized because it's, nothing is designated.
Yeah, I don't think anybody actually uses it. I've never seen, other than kids just playing.
That's just it. Now it would be designated, now when you drive by, you see that, hey, that's a park that anybody can use.
I've seen a lot of neighborhood kids play like wiffle ball, little games of tossing the football around in there. So it is used. And then my other concern is when we get over this COVID, when church is in session, I know sometimes they get a big crowd and they will park in that because there's no other place to park when they're going to church.
They park on the street, yeah.
They'll park on the street, but some of them will park in that, in that grassy area.
Oh, really?
But they request a permit, so they give me a list of when their events are and ask if they can use the park or they'll use town hall.
Yeah, it's not all the time. I mean, you know, the big Easter, Christmas, things like that. They have that, they need, they overflow parking. I don't want to take that away from them.
No, but I think that's a different situation where they're asking for permission to use it rather than just using it every day.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to have the highway superintendent do some research and find out how this area ties into the drainage for all of here. Because I know years ago, all of these houses used to go underwater and there was a very big drainage project under Bob Arakalian, and I want to make sure, Slick and Watson mentioned a culvert. I want to make sure that we know what got buried there and whether or not it was critical to the drainage in that area because if it was, you need to restore that. There should be plans somewhere. It was a really big project.
Oh, yeah, Billy knows all about it. I asked Rennie, he wasn't familiar with it.
Okay, Billy Green, of course.
Yeah, Billy knows everything about drainage and.
Well, he ran it. He ran the drainage.
Okay, well, my question would be, how does that fill in? Does it impact that drainage project at all? And if it doesn't, okay, then I'm, I'm kind of with Jason as far as clean it up and give people a placement to park.
Yeah, I think that would be step two.
Yeah, step two, to use the park.
I like that. I think that's more of a step two where, step one is we.
Get it out of there.
Take it back as a town, right?
Reclaim it.
Clean it up and then designate that you can't just park there because you have nowhere else to park. And then we move to maybe.
Well, I think, and that gives you more grounds to actually take it back because then you have the signs that's dedicated to parking sunrise to sunset.
Right.
So now it becomes something that's enforceable.
Right. So someone want to make a motion on how we move forward so we can get this started too?
I'll make a motion that we take the first step to send the building inspector, Mr. Josslyn, down to speak with the property owners to inform them that they are trespassing basically on or encroaching upon town land. And then the second thing would be if they'd like to purchase some of it, I'm sure we can arrange.
I don't know that we want to start selling the park.
Yeah, I don't know that we want to sell.
Just a little piece right there where they.
We've always been in the position that we don't want to sell land. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
Second, further discussion? I'm sure there's further discussion.
Well.
But Jason, do you have any further points? No? Denise wants.
Are we adding in a piece about police and providing notification or a timeline? Like if Sam speaks to them, are we giving them some time to find alternate parking? Or do we want Sam to, do we want any action taken against the folks that cut down trees and filled in lands? I guess what do we want Sam to say other than, can you park on our property?
What kind of action can we take against people that have cut down trees and taken land? Is there, I mean, is there anything in the penal code that we could, you know, can we send Chief Gillen over there and knock on the door and hand him a summons? I mean, I'm not sure.
Well, we could probably take legal action. They, they're trespassing on town property. I mean, they are building parking lots on town property.
Personally dictatorship and go in there and say, hey, you did this, we're going to come down hard on you. I'd rather just say, hey, you're not supposed to do this. Let's clean it up and make it back the way it's supposed to be and then move forward with that. But that's my opinion.
Okay, so we want to ask them to restore the land to its original?
I would think that we have the police and Sam take their respective positions on notifying them. And then from there, we say, you know, we want to put back, with the culvert that Ed had mentioned, make sure that that's not buried. I mean, obviously, you can't put a tree back that's been cut down or anything like that.
Oh, you can plant another one, sure can.
You can plant other ones and then return it to, I guess, as close as to it was previously. But I think that's more steps than just getting this rolling as far as saying, you know, that's not your property to park on.
Maybe we should start at step one and see how step one goes?
That's, well, we have another one where we don't know the end game and we don't know what we want, but we know we don't want them parking there.
We know where we want to start.
Yes, we know where we want to start, yes.
All right, thanks. I still want to know about the drainage and the culvert and also the initial complaint asked if the fill is clean. Can our conservation agent or somebody take a sample of this fill and tell us what's been dumped in there? Because I think we should check it.
You want that as part of the motion?
Yes, I do. I think this all should be done. It's.
I think that's step two myself, but.
That would have to require another motion or an amendment, friendly amendment to my motion.
Friendly amendment, then have the drainage plans pulled and see what this, where this property plays into the drainage plans and then take a sample of the fill, get it checked.
I think that's step two, but, you know.
I think that two separate discussions. One is, we need to have these people cease and desist their activities on town land. And that is separate from determining, asking the highway department to figure out where the culvert is and if it's still functioning as it should be. I think they're two distinct things. I'm not sure how you lump those together. We could certainly ask the highway department outside of any motion to ask these people to cease and desist to be on town land without requiring a motion to ask Rennie to go and check a culvert. You know what I mean? I don't.
Respectfully, I disagree. I think the complaint laid it out. They said that somebody was bringing in a truck and unloading barrels of fill onto town land. And we don't know what got buried there and we don't know what's in the fill. So why wouldn't we put all of our facilities in motion at the same time? I don't see this as a step one, step two. This is something that gets corrected and checked to make sure that it's, that it's okay to be filled in like that.
I agree. I think the first step, get them off the property. Second step, let's look at how we're going to restore that to the original condition. And that would be step two. And as far as the tree that they cut down, just look, and that, that looks to me like it was a dead tree. And they may have removed that too so they wouldn't fall on their house, but we could ask them. They could be asked.
Yeah, I think it's, agree. I think it's step one and then everything else outside of that we can do.
Without a motion?
Without, yeah, because that'd be part of the fixing of it. Anything else, please? All right, so we have a motion and a second. We had discussion. So can you read the, do you have the final?
Well, the original motion was to send Sam down to speak with the property owners and let them know that they're trespassing on town property.
But didn't the other part was to have Jeff go over to the?
But those weren't part of the original motion. We've just discussed that. That was all in discussion.
I think that was my first point. That didn't make it into the motion.
It's not in the motion. So the discussion were to have the police and Sam in step one take action as necessary, but that was not the motion. The motion was only Sam.
Yeah, so do we want the police to do King Street side and Sam to do Main Street side? Or do we want Sam to do it all?
If I'm, I mean, I would recommend it's both. I would recommend Sam go down and speak to the director butter that, I mean, I will say, I do think it's a little unfair that the complaint is not signed because I don't think that's fair to the homeowner where someone's accusing them of something and we don't know who's doing the accusing. I didn't see them cut the wood down, but someone did and is not putting their name on it. I would say step one. But I think Sam should speak to the director butters and see if they've cut trees down and filled in land. And at the same time, the police should leave a note on every car that's parked there and says, you have two weeks. You need to cease and desist from parking on town property. And he can, because we don't know the other properties. I don't know who's parking on King Street. I don't know who's parking in the other sections. I've been told it's across the street and people are crossing the street to the apartments. But I don't know which property they are. So I would say it's a two-step, Sam and the police.
I agree. Sam and police.
Okay.
So you want to make an amendment to your?
Add that, I'll add to the motion that we also asked Chief Gillen to issue paper warnings, whatever you want, to the violators over the next two weeks.
So we have a amendment to the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. I think we have enough discussion. All those in favor?
Yep.
All right. Look at that, we got a lot done tonight. I like this. This is good. Moving on, we had votes of the board fiscal 2020 year in transfers.
So there's only a few. Helen finished the warrants at 4:05 today, so I scrambled to make sure I got them all.
July got an extra 50-something days.
Yes.
60-something.
Yes, that is an error. I tried to change it when you came into my office and I was frustrated. I thought I deleted the nine.
That's okay. I distracted you. I'll take blame.
So this should take care of everything. I went through, some of them I need to follow up on. Like the Board of Health is putting in an encumbrance that exceeds their budget. That's not legal. But I didn't have time between now and between 4:05 and coming in here to find out what that was all about. So we'll just, I'll recommend to you that we transfer the money because we can't have a deficit if they've already placed an illegal order. But I need to follow up on that. That's the only one that's sort of pending because we don't know what the outcome of their request is. Most of these, actually, I should say, with the exception of the Board of Health, all the other departments have money in those lines or in those departments that we could transfer from. I just didn't have the time, so I just took it all from the selectmen stipend line because it was the first account on our ledger. So we'll just take the 3,000 and then we'll just move the 546 from poll workers and that'll cover all of the remaining deficits that we have to finish the year.
So I move that we approve the general fund transfers in the sum $3,546.
Is that it? Yeah, okay. Is there a second?
$35,000 bucks.
As laid out on the document.
Yes.
I second that.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Not for $35,000.
All those in favor? I thought you were, you had me hanging on a cliff. I thought you were adding more. All right, so finance directors time.
I just have one item for you. More sad news tonight. The Groveland Day 2020 has been canceled. The committee met and they decided that, given everything that's going on, they didn't want to waste more time or money planning for this year's event and they will move forward with planning a 2021 event to be bigger and better. So they have asked that I pass that along to you. And that's it.
Yep, okay. We have selectmen's times and reports. Ed, I'll start with you. Anything?
Yes, just a couple of items, information only. When are we going to open up the town hall on Friday, still noon? Before this COVID-19, we're open on, we're open on Friday mornings and are we moving forward with that?
So we discussed it last week's meeting that there's still, I mean, while the public can't come in, we have employees, you have four days a week that they're not dealing with the public. So if you guys want to bring them back on Fridays, that's, you know, we sort of discussed no Monday nights and no Fridays until we open to the public.
Are you getting complaints that it's not open on Fridays and nothing's getting done?
No, but my other one was about Monday night, about if the general public isn't coming into the building.
Yeah, there's.
Then, you know, until we open up, let the general public in. Any idea when that's going to happen?
No, but the chairman of the Board of Health recommended Labor Day on last Monday's meeting, so.
So it's going to be the full summer, yeah. And a lot of it will have to do with what's happening at the state level and of course, the national level, which is turning around anyways.
We originally talked about the start of phase four, which would be about the 22nd of July or the 20th, but towards Labor Day.
Yeah, and I think the discussion was if nothing's being held up and not getting done anyways, then maybe we would do that. But I think where we're not, we're not missing any workflow or anything and people are still being efficient with their time working remotely or now back in the office a few days a week, then it doesn't seem like it has to be done.
Right, I mean, everyone is back as of today. I think I mentioned last week, we have a few where there's two-person offices, so we're alternating time in the office. But otherwise, everyone's back. The library's back. They're all inside. Everyone, including the public works departments, are still not working Friday. So it's sort of a four-day work week until we resume all full, normal operations.
Is that it, Ed? All set?
I'm all set.
Bill?
Yes, I've got a couple of apologies and then something else. First, I'd like to apologize for not being here at the last meeting. Anyone knows me knows I hate missing meetings. People ask me to be on this board for a reason and when I'm not here, I do regret it, but sometimes things are not possible. My next apology is for all the people that were down in the pines over this long holiday weekend. Steve, the janitor, was unable to clean the bathrooms and because of that, we had to close them. I apologize for that because I don't find that acceptable. I mean, I think we as a body need to do a better job to make sure that there's an effective Plan B in place so that people that deserve and need to take the time off, take it. But we have adequate support and backup so that things don't get overlooked. We had a lot of boaters down there, a lot of families down there, and there were no bathrooms. And for that, I want to apologize. That's on us. And I'm going to try to make sure that it doesn't happen again, that when people need a vacation and deserve a vacation, that we have some kind of adequate backup. And I, I'm not, I don't want to put anybody out, you know, I'm not blaming anybody.
No, I just want to say though, this is only because of COVID.
Right, and I understand that, but even with COVID, had I known about this like last week, I'd have suggested, can we have some kind of Plan B? Can we have some kind of backup? Because it is a huge holiday weekend. I can't tell you the number of boaters down there over the weekend. I was down there a couple of times. I think Jason saw me playing baseball with my boys. It was a real inconvenience for a lot of people and I want to apologize to those people and promise that, you know, we need to, we'll do a better job in the future making sure that things are adequately backed up. So that's on me. Now I'd like to take some of the people in town to task. We had a recent election and we had less than 800 people vote. That's just shameful, absolutely shameful. Thousands and thousands and thousands of people have died for you to have the right to determine your future and your government over the course of the last 234 years. And for the failure to some of you to get up off your couch or even mail in a ballot is just inexcusable. I'm sorry, that's, I don't know how else to express it. You need to get involved. People want change and I get it, but change doesn't happen without your voices. It doesn't. So please, next election, let's see 1,800, 2,000, 3,000 people vote in this town. That would make me proud, very proud. What would have happened here the last election is really shameful. And the last point is phase three. I think we have entered that today. Are we going to allow games now to take place? Baseball, softball, that's on us. I guess we're still having, we still haven't kind of locked down to practices and non-contact drills. But I think phase three, per the governor's recommendations, we can now kind of allow that kind of stuff, right?
You can, but the board didn't vote only practices. The board voted that the permits could be issued as long as they followed the COVID and the governor's requirements. So if phase three allows for games with no spectators or very limited spectators, as long as that's being followed, that's already what the board has voted.
So we're all good with that. So anybody out there, you can schedule your games and keep in mind social distancing. We're not out of the woods yet. We are not out of the woods yet. So please, keep up what you've been doing. Groveland has done tremendous, tremendously well throughout this COVID pandemic. I want to keep it that way. I want to thank you all for doing your jobs and doing your part and keeping us all safe. Thanks to the doctors, the nurses, the grocery workers, the fire, the police, the trash men, the essential workers out there to keep our life as close to normal as possible. I appreciate it. And that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for my time.
Jeez, okay. Kathy?
I'm not disappointed in our town. I think we've done a phenomenal job with this COVID-19. I fully understand why many people didn't feel comfortable coming to the polls. I'm grateful for the people that were able to get the absentee ballot and do their votes and for those that were able to get to the polls. And I think this town has done an amazing job throughout this whole process. And all I've seen from people when I walk around town are smiles and hellos, and it's, it's a great town, and I'm proud of it. I will never take this town to task for doing the best they can. That being said, I'm pretty excited, because Mike Dempsey reached out to Jason and I, and wants to meet to look at the Mill Pond Recreation Area. So I wanted to just let you know that we're gonna schedule that visit there and take a look at it. Doesn't look great right now, but someday, it could be great.
Can we look at that last summer?
Yes.
Okay, okay, but think prettier.
Making sure that I wasn't dreaming that I was out there.
You did. No, 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 but I mean, now that, now that the, I guess the fencing that's left there is going to be blamed on the old, old highway department. So at some point, it would be nice to see if we have the personnel to remove that and the junk back there. When it's not too busy, maybe. That would be nice, because it is our junk that we left there from maybe as far backs as Fairbanks. The highway commissioner, Fairbanks, was in that building, maybe, you think? I think so, yeah. It'd be nice to clean that up, so that you can really start to take a look at the land.
Is that it?
Yep.
Jason, anything?
I'm good.
You're good. All right, I have one quick thing. I was part of the school reopening committee call. I think it was Wednesday. More of an informal kind of who's on here and what we think we're gonna do, and we have some tasks to follow up on. But that's going to be a difficult scenario to follow, given the different, and a different understanding of what's happening, what the expectations are. So I'm not sure if that's going to be a weekly kind of call meeting. I know we talked about sharing some of that responsibility. I think if it's not every week, maybe every week or a half or two weeks, I can do it. If it starts to become more of a weekly thing, I might need to tap on you to, to jump in, but
Absolutely.
There are spreadsheets that they're sending around about different points of where we might wanna be involved in, so there's kind of a lot to go through, but we'll see how the next couple of meetings go.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, old or unfinished business? Jason, anything for you?
No.
Kathy?
No.
Bill?
None at this time, sir.
Ed?
Nothing.
Nothing from me. We have correspondence from B.C. Park Quarterly Report. Skim through that. And we have the German. Is this right? Our next meeting is not till July 20?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
We are back to two weeks.
And are we staying at 4:30 for the two-week meeting?
Uh, I'm okay with it for now. Anybody else? Any problem with 4:30?
I'm good.
Yeah? Everybody, you're right, yeah?
Just with a caveat, my youngest, my last one, hopefully, is gonna be playing some baseball. It is my last one. It's my last kind of hurrah. If he's gonna play on, on, on a day, I really wanna go watch him play. I'm losing these days very rapidly, I find.
Do you know if they're gonna be Monday nights?
Only one or two Monday nights in the, in the whole season, I think. One is the 20th. But I, I wanna apologize for everybody in advance, but
Well, if we need to adjust it to accommodate that, then I, I don't have a problem with it. I just, my days of staying here till 11 o'clock are over.
Well, the game would probably be later, right? Not 4:30?
They usually start about 5:00, 5:45. I just wanna get it out there.
Meeting later.
Yeah.
He's my last, and I wanna, I wanna watch him.
Well, I'm just shocked that we're, we're back to two weeks now. We were doing
Unless you need to meet.
Four months of every week.
I know, unless you wanna meet. We're meeting in two weeks.
Maybe we should, we should increase that stipend. All right, so let's get a motion to adjourn at four from somebody?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?